Welcome. Good morning. Welcome to the Bucks County Commissioners Meeting of October 2, 2024. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Sean Lopren, our IT Specialist of Technical— Come on, Margie, help me.
Manager of Technical Specialities.
Manager of Technical Specialties will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You know what? We have two here, but I did not see. Didn't have time. Okay, give me this one, and you're gonna have this one. So our first presentation is for Juvenile Justice Week. And who is here to present for that? Okay, we have a proclamation related to it?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Bring with that, begin with that, and then you come up.
Thank you. Whereas Bucks County's juvenile justice system is charged with providing programs of supervision, care, and rehabilitation which provide balanced detention to the protection of our communities. And whereas the mission of the juvenile justice system is premised on the belief that crime victims, communities, and juvenile offenders must all be regarded as clients of the juvenile justice system, who should be, who should receive tangible benefits from their interactions with the system. Whereas this mission is based on the principles of restorative justice which give priority to repairing the harm done to crime victims and communities, and define offender accountability in terms of assuming responsibility and taking action to repair harm. Whereas community protection refers to the fundamental right of all Pennsylvania citizens to both be and feel safe from crime. And whereas victim restoration emphasizes that crime can forever change its victims and that the goal of victim restoration programs and services should be to restore crime victims to the greatest extent possible to their pre-crime status. Whereas youth redemption embodies the belief that the vast majority of juvenile offenders are capable of change and have strengths upon which treatment services can build. And whereas all services designed and implemented to achieve this mission and all hearings and decisions under Pennsylvania's Juvenile Act must be provided in a fair and unbiased manner. Now therefore do we, the Board of Bucks County Commissioners, hereby proclaim October 6 through the 12th, 2024, as Juvenile Justice Week throughout the county of Bucks. In doing so, we encourage all residents of Bucks County to remain committed to raising awareness and understanding of juvenile justice.
Thank you. And we have Will Chapman here. Was looking for you on the right, but found you. Thank you for being here today.
This is much more intimidating than I thought it would be, so I'm gonna still come up here and speak, though. Just want to greatly appreciate the acknowledgement of the proclamation specifically in the upcoming Juvenile Justice Week. My name's Will Chapman. I'm the Chief Probation Officer for Bucks County. Brian Howke and I, Brian is our Deputy Chief, would like to specifically thank the county commissioners for their continued support for our department. We would also like to thank our administrative juvenile court judge, Finley, for his leadership and his support. We would also like to thank our juvenile court judges, Judge Bowman and also Judge Bateman. We'd also like to thank Court Administrator Steve Watson and also Deputy Court Administrator, who was our former Chief Probation Officer, Ted Rice. For those unfamiliar with our office, we receive written allegations from local police departments charging juveniles between the ages of 10 to 17 for misdemeanors and felonies. Some are first-time nonviolent offenders, some are cases that are very serious, very, very risky situations, and cases that require a lot of attention. We not only just supervise the juveniles that come involved with juvenile court, but we manage the entire juvenile court process. In preparing for today's proclamation, Brian and I, Brian Howke and I, felt that it was important to acknowledge the work that juvenile probation does, and also let the entire office know, as well as everyone here, how proud we are of their work. This includes various units within the department, such as our intake department, our out-of-county supervision probation officers, our supervision probation officers, electronic monitoring probation officers, special offender unit, placement probation officers, our victim advocates, our fiscal department, our IT support, secretaries, court operations, as well as our supervisors. In working in this field, there can be days where we feel like we're really making an impact, or working with families, juveniles, really feel like we're making a lot of progress and a lot of changes. There can be other days where it doesn't feel like that. It can be a difficult time working with difficult situations and troubled families trying to make things right. The one thing that we wanted to make sure we acknowledged, Brian and I, was the fact that we feel so honored to have the staff that we work with, the fact that there are so many opportunities that our department and our staff give us that help us to feel positive about what's going on, to see the choices they make, how involved they are in their cases, some of the characteristics that we come across that help us day-to-day to feel this way and feel so proud of the work they do. They're advocates. They're advocates not only for the juveniles, for the families they come involved with, but also for the victims in cases. They're empathetic, understanding what's going on, not only with victims that were involved in cases, but also empathetic to situations that are going on in a juvenile's history, as well as their families. They're caring. They're accountable, not only to themselves, coworkers, but also to the court. They're selfless, always willing to put themselves in risky situations to put themselves out there, not only for juvenile safety, but for the community's safety as a whole. They're collaborative, constantly involved with school districts, mental health programs, gathering information, social service agencies. They're collaborative, tireless, engaging, bless you, compassionate. They're funny. I love this group. They're a great group to spend time with, and they certainly help me stay positive many days. They're creative, optimistic, great communicators, motivators for juveniles and families, vigilant, prepared, invested, and passionate. As you can note on the screen over here, we have, we're a very veteran office. The people that are acknowledged on that screen are people that have over 10 years of service within the county. If you look at our office as a whole, over 50% of our office has been there for at least 10 years, and 30% of our office has been there for at least 20 years. Brian and I believe that those numbers demonstrate how much our office cares, how passionate they are about the work that they do. We would like to thank our entire office for the service that they do for the courts, for the county, and most importantly, the citizens of Bucks County. Thank you.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate the work you do, and it goes without saying, Bucks County, from the juvenile court system to juvenile detention to probation, has an excellent reputation, and we're proud to have you all there. I guess that's what comes when you have people there for that many years. Are there any questions or any comments? Well, thank you. Love to come up and give you the proclamation, take a picture, and do you have people you'd like to all come up?
I wonder if there's all these people.
Yeah, are they all here that are up there? Thank you.
That was a great presentation.
Thanks.
Are these all the people that's on the board that are here with you today?
Hi, Brian, how are you? Good to see you.
Are these the people that are on the board?
Where am I going? I cannot get out of salary board.
Great presentation. Very passionate, very good.
Hey.
an update on her protections from abuse.
As Commissioner Marsaglia mentioned, I'm Colleen Christian, your prathonatory, and I just want to thank you for the time this morning to recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and also to give the annual Protection from Abuse Report and talk about some of the initiatives that the prathonatory is doing to combat domestic violence in Bucks County. So in the prathonatory's office, our main job is the paper. We handle all of the paper that makes the civil court run. And I like to say every piece of paper represents a person, and it's usually a person at a very difficult time in their lives. And the most important paper that we handle are Protection from Abuse Orders, which used to be called restraining orders when I was growing up, and the shorthand is the PFA. And last year I came before you and I gave a report of the rising numbers of PFAs in our county, and I sought out the support of the commissioners, and I again want to thank you for your help and support in accomplishing what we have accomplished in the last year. So let's talk about the problem. Protection from abuse orders are definitely on the rise. We had hoped that perhaps it was a reaction to COVID, but unfortunately, that's not proving the case. Last year, we had a record-breaking year at 1,122 Protection from Abuse Orders, and this year, we're on track to sadly beat that. We are already at 887 applications and orders filed, and at this rate, if we take a look at the 10-year snapshot from 2014 to 2024, PFA applications are up 95%, which is really significant. So last year, when we saw these rising numbers, we wanted to do something to make the system more efficient, more accessible, and maybe eliminate some of that paper. So we looked at something really groundbreaking in the prathonatory world, which was an online Protection from Abuse form that you could fill out on your phone, on your tablet, on your computer. And I went to many people in the county. The IT department was very supportive, the courts were supportive, the solicitors were supportive, and the commissioners were supportive. And we invested time and money, and we have launched our online PFA program. We now have a QR code that you may see posted in the county that will take you directly to the online application. And if you've never seen one of these applications before, the way that it used to be done, and still can be done, is pages and pages of handwritten paper. And now we have streamlined all of that for our more technological age. And we've shared this information with the district courts, we are sharing it with our state reps, we are also sharing it with every police department in the county. So we are very proud that we were able to launch this, and again, I thank you for all your help. In other news, we have solidified our relationship with A Woman's Place. They are in our hallway almost every day of the week, volunteers helping the residents of Bucks County successfully fill out their paperwork. They will also be undergoing training online. We have a really strong relationship with the members of the Bucks County Bar Association who help us out weekly also on this. And I will share with you, when I first started going to PFA court, which is held every Wednesday, and then we have emergency hearings almost every day, you know, to protect, you know, women, children, the elderly, it kind of broke my heart when I first started going, to just see the fear, the anxiety, to sense the tension that was up there. And our sheriff was really wonderful. He's provided us a deputy to help us feel safe. But my opinion has changed, folks, now that I spend more time there. Instead of seeing the sadness, I see women who are fearful, standing up for themselves and for their children. I see volunteers from, you know, the area on aging, standing up for our elders who are being abused. I see volunteers who are fighting it out in the trenches, and it does make you feel really good about the people of Bucks County who will stand up for those who need help. I see it in the members of the bar association who come every week, as I mentioned, A Woman's Place, and our prothy pound, our puppies, our therapy dogs, that's still in effect. And to see, you know, a smile on a child's face because there's a therapy dog in place, and all of these wonderful people coming together, it really does give you hope and hope to face these numbers. And again, I just want to thank you for helping me with the funds and all the support. When there's a need, the county can really come together, and I certainly appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tell everyone about the QR code.
I don't know if my colleagues have any questions, but thank you. I think it's been almost exactly 50 years since the federal government passed a law preventing abuse, and so I'm sorry to say it's still here, but it's great to have you involved in it. Any questions? Great, thank you.
Well, never mind.
Sorry, we'll take it from the sheriff's budget.
Just a comment, Madam Chair, just great, great presentation, Colleen, really was. Well put together, a lot of great information there, so thank you very much, and your staff for the great work that you're doing.
Thank you. And because it's fall, we need to have our honorary fall destination proclamation because Bucks County is the place to go. And Paul Bencivango is here from Visit Bucks County, and you may have brought some other people with you, but we'll begin with the proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas each year, Bucks County residents welcome the red and yellows of autumn as they overtake the county's verdant summer landscape to paint a familiar picture of fall. The season draws out residents and tourists alike, all hoping to experience fall in the countryside, along the river, or in our bustling boroughs, complete with vibrant foliage, pumpkin and apple picking, festivals, and events. This year, it seems, the world, the world has taken notice with Priceline naming Bucks County the number-one fall foliage destination in the United States, not in Pennsylvania, in the United States, a designation since featured in articles by Travel and Leisure, Forbes, The New York Times, and more than 30 other news outlets. Such recognitions are made possible in no small way by Visit Bucks County, the county's official tourism promotional agency, whose staff works year-round to promote Bucks County as the very best place to live, work, and have fun. In cooperation with local tourism partners, Visit Bucks County strives to boost growth and hospitality and related business, bolstering an industry that serves 8.2 million visitors annually, generates $1.2 billion in economic impact, and supports a workforce of more than 28,000 people. It is our sincere hope that Bucks County's newfound fall foliage fame aids in making this year's fall tourism season the most successful one yet. Now therefore, do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, Diane Ellis Marsaglia, Bob Harvey, and Jeanne D. Geralamo, hereby join all county residents and visitors in celebrating Bucks County as the nation's top fall foliage destination for 2024. In so doing, we implore Visit Bucks County for their hard work and dedication to promoting our beautiful county, and we encourage those who haven't experienced Bucks County in the fall that come check us out, and urge those who have come to visit again as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good morning, Paul. Good to see you.
Good morning. You hit all of my key points, so I feel like you just did my presentation. But yeah, we are super excited. With me today is our leadership team of Joanne, Heather, Lisa, and Kelly, representing our entire Visit Bucks County team. A lot of times, locals don't see what we do, because our job is to market Bucks County outside of Bucks County, to bring people in, and again, to spend money. There's 8 million people, just to reiterate the facts, 8 million people that spend and create economic impact of $1 billion and supports 28,000 hospitality jobs. We were super excited, but we all know what a great fall destination we are, and as you said, not just in the Philly region, not just in Pennsylvania, but in the United States. And it was really cool to get text messages from our colleagues at other tourism bureaus that saw the national news with Bucks County question mark, and we would be like, heck yeah. So we're super excited to promote the fall in all seasons, and we encourage everybody here to get out, and sometimes we forget what's in our own backyard. So find us on social media, go to our website, and hit that brewery, that winery, take that Covered Bridge Drive, spend your dollars here in Bucks County. And all of us love what we do, and we have a passion for it. Some people say, oh, you've got a fun job. It's fun, it is, it is hard work, and there's a lot of creativity that goes into it, and beyond just marketing, we support and advocate for the hospitality industry. So thank you for the support of the county and everybody in this room, and get out there and spend your dollars in Bucks County this fall. Thank you.
Thank you as well. And come on up, everybody.
Like to compliment all the great work that people are doing. We have, still have problems, like the protection from abuse means that there's family in trouble, they could be conflicts over money, divorce, different problems. And why has this skyrocketed, that we have so much protection from abuse and problems? Breakdown of the family is a problem. We have, like this transgender medical things, that we have transgenders, the rights of women are undermined, where men have the right to go into sports and beat up on women. This undermines things. The other thing is, money is necessary to raise children and take care of children. And the last three years, the average family lost $2,000 because of the war on energy, fossil fuels, whereas previously, the average family had $6,000 more under President Trump. It's the first time since World War II that we became energy independent and energy dominant, where we were able to generate a lot of wealth. And he brought down the taxes so that we were fair and able to compete with other countries and maintain good wages, and they use the tariffs to protect American workers' wages. So because of the decline of $2,000 per family over the last three years, we have a lot of labor strife. The Team Search Union members, 2/3 of them are in favor of Trump. In Israel, 60% favor Trump of Jews, and 30% favor Biden-Harris, who, the job of a public official is very difficult, it's very hard, and we need honesty and integrity. The debate last night was very good, and Vance did a great job, and just inflation we're suffering from, which hurts the families, and illegal immigrants coming in, was undermining wages, and the surge in crime due to the persecution of January 6 of President Trump by the judiciary system, and not having protection from Kennedy, Democratic who supports Trump, and Adams, mayor in New York, complaining about illegal immigrants, now he is being persecuted. His crimes, any alleged crimes are much less than 100 Biden's crimes. So let's support merit and make America great again. Thank you very much.
Beth Roth.
Good morning. Beth Roth, Bedminster Township. And I'm here today to talk about the facts. the facts, the facts about hand counting. Hand counting is, the plan for hand counting that we have addresses three objections that you may have. One, it takes a lot of money. Two, it takes a lot of time. Three, it takes a lot of people. The plan is that training will occur with the committee people, and they will then each go back to their precinct and form their counting teams. Accounting team is made up of independents, Republicans, and Democrats. It has to be a mixed team. The, it takes five people, one who is the caller, who is going to read the ballots. There will be two tally people and two watchers, so that no mistakes are made. When the ballot bags are open, those ballots will be counted out into piles of 25. Each team will count 250 ballots. 250 ballots can be counted in one hour. So, we have, we have the people, we have the beginnings of the people. The time you can count, as I just said, 250 ballots in an hour, so this is not days, this is one hour, and it's free, because these are volunteers who are stepping up to help secure the integrity of the election. That being said, it has been brought to my attention that there is a rumor that started somewhere that said that we were planning to storm the precincts and steal the ballots. That, that's just ludicrous. It's just beyond words. We, we have tried, and I think succeeded, in walking a straight line, being fair and honest and polite and respectful. And we, this is not our intention at all. This would never even cross our mind. Our intention is to work with you, to ask for your permission, and we can set up the, whatever pilot you want to set up, we can try it. We're willing to try it. And I just want to conclude by saying, there's a saying that goes, "Your talk talks, and your walk talks, but your walk talks louder than your talk talks." I believe that we have walked with integrity, and we are asking you now for permission to count the ballots.[777.81][777.81](APPLAUSE)
Bill Everett.
Good morning. My name is Bill Everett of Middletown Township. I normally speak about election integrity, but today I want to share concerns I have about Lake Luxembourg, which is within Core Creek Community Park in Middletown Township. I think Core Creek is the crown jewel of our county park, parks in Bucks County. The park is fed by Core Creek that runs south under Route 332 and along Silver Lake Road to the Core Creek Park. The problem is that Newtown Bucks County Joint Municipal Authority Board is planning the construction of a sewage treatment facility on Silver Lake Road in Newtown Township, adjacent to the floodplain and Core Creek that feeds the Lake Luxembourg and Core Creek that resides in Middletown Township. You may ask, why worry? The environmental assessment should be thorough. Well, construction of the new Wawa on Silver Lake Road is delayed because a tunnel must be drilled through the bedrock under the stream running adjacent to Silver Lake Road to allow the wastewater to bypass. The planned sewage treatment facility is just down Silver Lake Road from the Wawa. So, I respectfully request that you investigate the sewage treatment facility project and make sure that a detailed environmental assessment be made regarding the wastewater from the proposed project before it proceeds any further. A mistake will have a long-term negative impact to Lake Luxembourg and Core Creek Park. Thank you for your time this morning.[898.12][898.12](APPLAUSE)
Kristi Ann Morris.
Can I get someone to hand this to you? I've brought copies for you.
Officer Wall, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. I'm Kristi Ann Morris. I'm from Middletown Township. I'm a retired PhD chemist, and I'm going to talk about election integrity, specifically what's coming up in November, how we can protect our elections. The letter that I gave you, I also gave you a DVD, was prepared by Jeff O'Donnell. I'm going to read his letter, and then if you have questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Concerning critical threats to the upcoming 2024 election, in July 2024, computer systems worldwide that were using Microsoft Windows operating systems were rendered inoperative because CrowdStrike downloaded a patch and it didn't work. This caused a lot of harm, a lot of worry, a lot of damage, loss of money, and it took days, weeks to repair. And as you know, the majority of our election management systems use Microsoft Windows as an operating system. Election servers, worker station clients, and other migration, registration systems are dangerously susceptible to any future similar event. Should an outage event be repeated in the days before or after the election, it could prevent the election from ever being decided. The consequences to our entire nation would be devastating and without precedent. Therefore, I'm asking, and so is Jeff, all counties in the United States to immediately prepare and train for the possibility of the November 5th election will have to be conducted without computer systems. The specific steps necessary for this event are as follows. Counties which use paperless ballot marking devices must ascertain that sufficient certified paper ballots will be available on election day should those devices or central counting computers become unavailable. Sufficient personnel must be trained to hand count. Thank you, Beth. And the paper ballots completed by voters on election day, as well as any absentee or early ballots which remain uncounted on election day. Counties and Secretary of State offices must create and test a plan to transmit the election results without the use of computers. This plan will include the physical transit of tally results from county to the Secretary of State office with all chain of custody, proof of validity at all locations, and observation laws observed. Paper records of all poll books containing the identity of lawful voters must be generated, and these records then provided to each polling location in advance.
Thank you. You could, your time is up, but it's, Chris Harm.[1117.58][1117.58](APPLAUSE) Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Chris Harm, Committee Woman in Middletown. One quick question. I've brought this up a couple times, requesting the possibility of having Saturday hours for the, I don't know what you call them now, early voting at the locations in Bucks County. And I have some of my constituents wondering when this is going to happen, if it's going to happen. And if, what I'd like to know is, is it going to happen? Does anybody have plans for this yet? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.[1166.08][1166.08](APPLAUSE) Andy Warren.
Morning, Commissioners. Regarding today's agenda, I have a question about 7A, $2.7 million to approve a contract in for Cloud Suite Enterprise Resource Planning System, $2.7 million. What is all that supposed to be? 13A, the Greenway Trail, we're ending a contract. Are we ending the research on the Greenway Trail? And the last one is 16A, we're spending $2 million a year to delivery programs, job training unemployed, and services for one year. Could somebody explain just a little about each of those? That's for today's. Referring back to two weeks ago, I had a question about spending on a, on a facility. You all said, check with the staff. I did check with the staff, and I would like to tell, want to tell you that your staff were professional, arrangements were made, conference call was had, their answer was very bureaucratic, but very good on your behalf. I still don't buy it all, but your staff did their job, and I appreciate it. And finally, last night, I listened to the debate. I heard a Democrat candidate refer to himself as a knucklehead, which I was glad to hear, because I am about to prove that knuckleheadedness is bipartisan, as I rush in as a fool to where angels don't go. I don't have a horse in the union discrepancy that you all are going through, but I do have questions, and ultimately, as a taxpayer, want to pay it. Last week, or the last time we were here, a comment was made that an offer was extended to a union representative who did not take it to the union. If that's true, accurate, you all, we really have got big problems. And then, I go check the newspaper, of course, we get the stories that are in a bit of a black eye for the county. I look at today's personnel's action, there's $6,000 raises for human services people. I did not make it to the, to the salary board, but I did pick up what I think is an agenda, and I noticed on there that there's $58,000 in pay raises for human service non-union representatives. Can you all settle this and get this on?[1361.42][1361.42](APPLAUSE)
So, let me just begin with that. I think you're referring to human resources, and I think you're referring to the fact that there's a federal law, FSL, I forget the numbers for.
Fair Standards Labor Act.
Fair Standards Labor Act that required us to do that, because they are exempt employees, and they raised the amount of money that those employees are allowed to make before overtime. And if somebody wants to correct that, Solicitor or anybody, I've got that described. So, you misinterpreted that completely, and if you want to talk about it later, we can do that. The second thing is, I just wanted to make a quick remark to Mr. Everett's question about Core Creek. We will have our Planning Commission, the Director of General Services, and the Director of Parks and Rec take a look at the boring plans, as well as the environmental protection for that, and we will keep a close eye on that. I was going to have Ms. Humphrey answer the question about Saturday, possible Saturday voting on demand. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. So, we're going to begin on demand on October 15th in our three government service centers. We're also going to have our ballot boxes open beginning October 7th because mail-in ballots are being sent out as we speak. So, we are just going to make sure in the three government service centers that the mail, ballot boxes are open. On demand begins October 15th, and then all the other ballot boxes in the libraries are opening on October 21st, and those will be open the hours of the library. I believe we do have confirmation that we're going to try and have staff available at least the two Saturdays in the three government service centers before the election for on demand.
Thank you. While you have the mic, I'm wondering, Mr. Gugula could answer the question about the ERP?
Thank you. Yes, for your consideration, as Andy Warren pointed out, is a contract to award for a software vendor, current software vendor Lawson, now named Infro, for ERP services, which includes software services for all financial components such as general ledger, payroll, human services, purchasing and procurement. So, that is a current vendor that we are, I've looked at to refresh their software that was purchased in 2008 to current standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, thank you. And I'll ask Ms. McKevitt to respond to the Planning Commission issue with the Greenway.
Got it. So, this vendor has declared bankruptcy, so we have to end their contract, and we will be starting up with a new one for this project. And do you want me to answer the?
Yeah, the workforce development question.
And so, the Workforce Development Board is recontracting with the, with EDSI to provide on-the-job training, what else are we providing? On-the-job training, incumbent worker training, and individual training programs. It's just a continuation of their contract.
Thank you. Any other board comments or questions or anything?
Just a couple comments, just on the election questions. The, I apologize, I don't remember the name of the speaker who asked and gave us the discs and the handout. More of the recommendations is to be prepared with, to use paper ballots. If you have a paperless system, we already have paper ballots. So, I think it was, I guess it was maybe Board of Elections meeting, someone asked what happens if the power goes out. A lot of the places where we have elections, the polling places, are places like schools, firehouses that have backup generators. You know, we don't require that, but a lot of the places we are located didn't have that. But even if they didn't, the machines we do have, have a battery backup that are pretty extensive, and even if you didn't have that, it's paper, and you have the ballot bags. And so, it's literally just people marking and sliding into the ballot bag, and the ballot bags are brought to this building where they'd be processed. And so, you know, there is that, you know, contingency on purpose, really, you know, to make sure if something like that happens, it's a pretty seamless system.
Can I make one comment? And one other note to mention is that the election system does not touch the Internet.
Any comments or anything? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the September 18th, 2024 meeting, and Resolutions 1 through 16B?
Should move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving to the regular agenda, we have personnel actions for today. Is there a motion to approve those?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board appointments, Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, thank you. Bucks County Workforce Development Board, there are two new appointments. These are both individuals who represent industries. One's a small, and I forget which one's which, one's a small industry representative, one's a larger industry representative. The state law that governs the Workforce Development Board mandates that there be different representatives of different industries, as well as higher education, nonprofits, trade unions, et cetera, on this board to help guide policies and programs that help employers find employees and help people who want to be trained and improve their skills and, you know, improve themselves in general to get those opportunities. So, Becca Lind is a new appointment. Term will end 10/5/2027. Perry Lawton, new appointment term to also end 10/5/2027. And the SEPTA Citizens' Advisory Committee, this is a two-year term, Mr. Patrick Garad, new appointment that will end 10/7/2026. I'll make that, make a motion for those three appointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have one other civics today to the YWCA of Bucks County for $1,250. Is there a motion to approve that?
Should move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chief Operating Officer, report.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just would echo my comments from the last meeting in that I want to thank our Finance Department and our county departments, Rose and Quartz, for their work on this, next year's upcoming budget. Meetings are taking place now, and we are working through some of the minutia of fine details of that budget, and we will present it to you soon. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Solicitor's report?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have just one item to report. The board held its standing executive session yesterday, October 1st, with staff and legal counsel present to receive confidential legal advice. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner comments? Commissioner D. Geralamo?
No comments today, ma'am.
Commissioner Harvey?
No comments today, ma'am.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, thank you. One, there's been a lot of attention over the past couple of meetings regarding something called the Bucks 2040 Plan. This was created by our planning commission using survey, the first statistically valid survey I think ever done to put this together. It's a standard comprehensive plan, it's done every 10 years. As best to my knowledge, it was not done by the United Nations, but by the planning commission of Bucks County. The accusations about it sort of being some kind of, you know, ridiculous agenda, I thought it was interesting just to sort of highlight, you know, what the, what the basic idea is behind it. First, it's essentially a look at our current population, how we've changed over the past 10 years, takes a census information from 2020, compares it to what we were in 2010, takes a look at where we're growing, what's happening in our county demographically, which gives us an idea of where we need, excuse me, to improve or we need to, you know, make changes, things we need to be aware of in terms of moving forward. Just in terms of the priorities, which has gotten a lot of, you know, you know, kind of criticism, priority number one was make housing more attainable. And that is talking about people who are first-time home buyers. You know, we've kind of, as you probably know, hopefully, you know, Levittown, the construction of that in the 1950s really revolutionized what this county was, started a huge population growth, completely changed what Lower Bucks County looked like. But Levittown, roughly 17,000 houses were built for people working at the steel mill and Roman Haws and 3M. It was built for cops and teachers and nurses and people who were moving out of the cities and thought maybe they'd never have a chance to buy a house in the suburbs with a yard and, you know, and detached from their neighbors and now they could. And certainly it's not the only development, you know, in this county that did that. That's attainable housing. That's what's referred to as attainable housing. Housing for people coming out of college, people coming out of the military who have skills and are getting their first job and are making some decent money and want to buy a house. In this county, that is increasingly becoming impossible. And it's across the country. As someone referenced, it was a topic last night in the debate, you know, so, and justifiably so. Since 2008, 2009, we have failed to build in this country about four million starter homes. So it is a longstanding problem that needs attention. Second goal was to promote economic opportunity. You know, we tried to visit Bucks County here, talking about all the jobs that are supported by tourism. And so the money that they use, which they get from the county to promote this county, is essentially trying to improve opportunity for people who are in the hospitality field. But we do that with the training that was referenced with EDSI and Workforce Development Board. You know, how do we help businesses come here, open up shop, expand if they're already here, you know, find locations in the county they want to move to? How do we do that? Expand travel options. Certainly for a long time, we focused only on cars. There's a lot of communities that don't have sidewalks, which makes it obviously difficult, also a little dangerous depending on where you want to walk or bike or push a stroller. So how do we make transportation options for all our residents, whether it's sidewalks or trails or increased mass transit, you know, roadway improvements, things of that nature? How do we do that in a way that's safe for them and also makes sense building toward the future? Act on climate change. The survey that was done, some of the highest scores talked about people's concern about maintaining, you know, the nature of this county, but also preparing and doing something to help stop climate change from happening. We have been the victim of several storms over the times just that I've been here, storms that are really record-breaking in their intensity and tragic in the loss of life as we saw last summer, summer of 23. So how do we prepare for that? What do we do as a county to deal with stormwater management, to deal with flooding issues? You know, how do we improve our infrastructure? And that could be anything from roads to energy systems. We heard about sewage system that's, that's being discussed, or sewage treatment plant is being discussed. That's where this fits in. Enhance our parks and trails, pretty self-explanatory. We have, you know, fantastic Parks and Rec director looking to make some really neat additions and changes. We have a completely new signage program that's coming that's going to really, you know, spruce up signs that are probably, I don't know how old, but you know, maybe old as me, I don't know. Yeah, so it's, they're pretty, they're up there. Protect our farmland and natural resources. You know, certainly this county, as we did today, one of the things in our agenda was preserving a farm in Bedminster, I think the 249th farm that this county has preserved over the past few decades. And so what are we doing in that respect? That's the goal, the goal of the Bucks 2040 Plan. Hardly part of the Marxist agenda, as you heard in the last couple of meetings. But I think it's, and this by the way, has been on our website for the whole year, I think, since maybe January. So take a look at it. You know, it's, it's some pretty good stuff and I appreciate the planning commission and all their work. The final comment is just for, you know, our county and some of our elected row officers here tonight at sundown, Mark Sabine and Rosh Hashanah. And so we want to wish everyone a very blessed holiday, moving into the next 10 days or so. I think Yom Kippur happens before our next meeting, so I should say that as well. And so, and obviously coming up on Monday does mark the one-year anniversary of the horrific terrorist attacks on Israel, which has led to quite a lot of pain and hardship throughout that region. And so obviously, as we're moving into this time in the Jewish calendar, you know, I always kind of, when I taught world religions, I used to talk about this and with my students, you know, most of whom were not Jewish, and talk about, you know, this great, this sort of, I think it was a wonderful tradition of, you know, it's the beginning of the new year, but you're taking the first 10 days to really think about the previous year, you're really thinking about, you know, you know, your life and your interaction with others and that day of atonement on Yom Kippur, the holiest day of the Jewish year. You know, hopefully in this time of reflection and peace, that there can be some peace in the Middle East. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned.